I would like to call the Orange Board of Education meeting to order on Monday, August 17, 2020 at 7:05. Could we stand for the pleasure of allegiance, please? Charles, would you be kind enough to read the mission statement, please?
The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is the shared responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference.
Thank you. Public participation, I don't think we have any. No? Very well. We will move on to, what do we have here? Correspondence? We have no correspondence this month. Consent agenda? I will need a motion to accept the item under the consent agenda. The item is the minutes from the July 20, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes? Betty? I have a second. Mary? Any discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? Staying? Very well. I will need a motion to accept the item under the consent agenda. The item is the minutes from the special board of ed meeting on July 20, 2020 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept these minutes? Ken? Second? Charles? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Staying? We will move right on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, board members. You know, at times during the month of July and August, it seems school systems are getting ready, and the summer passes by pretty fast. But to no surprise, this summer went by in a flash and a blink of an eye. The district has been spending much time getting ready for the school year, and I know parents also and teachers have done the same. Specifically, our parents, they've been thinking about what decision they need to make. Are we going to do in-person or having our child attend in-person or remotely? So with that, a survey went out last week or over a week ago, and we had a profound response. We had over 90% of our families respond to the survey, and about 87 to 88% of our families have decided to participate in-person, while 11 to 12% are deciding to participate remotely. Some of the feedback that we've received is because some of the questions have not been answered yet. So when time has passed and we've gotten the answers, we've shared them. One response that we've gotten from our families are frequently asked questions that we've sent out probably over a month ago, had a great response. Though we didn't have all the answers to their questions, and what they have found, hopefully even today, many of our principals have sent out more communications, specifically what's arrival look like, what's dismissal look like, how's a bus going to look like? Additional information will be provided tomorrow, class placements, their bus, not the bus routes, but their bus numbers. But still, when information is given to us, we'll be sharing more information. One of the big questions they asked is what will remote learning look like in the first phase? We provided an overview of that. Dr. Russo, when she presents, will go into a little bit more detail. Another piece where, I don't know if I used the same sentiment last month, you know, we're usually focusing on instruction as an education system, but now more than ever, we're focusing on our facilities. And at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Gray to come up and update where we are with our facilities, specifically our ventilation systems, in order for us to prepare and be ready in two weeks.
Thank you, Dr. Scarpetti. If I could, I'd just like to take a minute to thank a few people. In the aftermath of tropical storm Isaias, we had some help from the town emergency management team, and I just want to thank Mr. Tino Russo and Mr. Fred Palmer for their help, as well as Mr. Don Foyer and Mrs. Steve Sifarelli from the Highway Department who helped us out. Our custodians cleared all the debris and brushed from the grounds and created piles around the buildings, and I want to thank our crews from the Park and Rec Department who came by and picked all that up. Our buildings were nice and clean literally the day after the storm, so thank you to all those folks. As Dr. Scarpetti said, we do have an update on our work that we embarked upon when I reported to you last month. I talked to you about the fact that we were going to be working on our duct cleaning and commissioning our ventilation system. We are approaching the end of both of those projects, actually. The duct cleaning is nearing completion. All ducts, air handlers, and grills will have been cleaned and completed by this Thursday. Our vendor who is doing the commissioning of the ventilation has finished Turkey Hill School, Racebrook School, and Peck Place School, and they are here today and tomorrow, and they'll be done. Next steps with that will be that they will be submitting reports to Matt Allring and myself, who will then meet to discuss their findings and their recommendations and putting a plan together for that. The information from the reports covers the operations, as I said last month, of all the mechanicals, the dampers, air handlers, the rooftop units, unit vents in the classrooms, motors, computer programs, and how all of them align, and to make sure that they're actually communicating and working properly and efficiently. We continue to order and will continue to order as necessary PPE items. There are some that are on backorder, but we started early enough where we have enough of a supply in district of the backordered items, but I continue to order those to make sure that we have a sufficient supply moving forward should we need them. The summer cleaning at all the buildings is complete, and what the custodians are doing now is they're just currently making final adjustments to the classroom setups. Teachers have been coming in, and they're making final adjustments to furniture that's in the classroom, but also storing the furniture that isn't needed in the classrooms at this time, based on how we space the desks out. In the last week and a half, I have attended three webinars from the state. It's a combination of the Connecticut Department of Public Health and Yale School of Public Health. I attended optimizing ventilation for school reopening, and I am very happy to say that everything, not just some of the things, but everything that was discussed in that webinar, it was an hour-long webinar, we are doing in our district. So I am feeling really confident about the steps we have taken to prepare the schools and especially our ventilation system for the start of school. It was very comforting to sit in that webinar and hear everything that they were talking about, and even some of the questions other districts were asking that we had already embarked upon. I also attended a cleaning and disinfecting of schools webinar, again, through the Connecticut Department of Public Health and Yale School of Public Health. And really, that talked a lot about the mitigating strategies that we should be implementing, but also talked about the five Cs of cleaning, and this was said to us by one of the representatives from Yale, and I thought it was really encompassing of the work we need to do when we're cleaning our buildings. And the five Cs are cleaning, determining your routine cleaning and your high-touch cleaning throughout the day for this plan. Chemicals, which to use, how to use them. Concentration, it's important to know the dilution ratios of those chemicals that you're using. And I will say, all the chemicals that we use are on the EPA list N, so they are approved. Contact time, making sure that you are leaving these chemicals on the surfaces for the prescribed contact time. For instance, if a chemical has a 10-minute contact time, and you spray it, and you leave it for four minutes and then wipe it off, it's not doing its job. It needs to stay on. We currently have a chemical that we're using that is a five-minute contact time. Coverage, they say that when you spray a surface, you need to spray it evenly so the surface glistens. You don't want just spots, because now you're missing parts of the surface. So you have to spray the surface and make sure it's glistening. And then finally is compatibility, making sure that you're not mixing chemicals together that shouldn't be mixed together. We have third-party training next week for our custodians that will encompass all of this, so they will have a really clear understanding and idea of how we're going to be cleaning and disinfecting our buildings as we start the school year. And I actually had another, just to follow up, another webinar today, and that was about mitigating strategies, community spread, and decision-making. Mrs. Edo also attended the same webinar, and we'll be sharing the discussion with Dr. Scarpetti and the team. And I also have two more webinars planned this week. One is for the nutrition program, and another is preparing school water systems for fall reopening. So really getting as much information as we can to prepare ourselves for this opening. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Before I finish up with the personnel update, you know, at this time, you know, we know that families are going to be making a choice, and most of them have. Another question that has come up to our principals but to myself is, "Dr. Scarpetti, am I able to change my mind?" Absolutely. This is a personal decision that all families need to make, that what's right for them, and no matter what lens you are looking at this, we support all of you throughout this whole entire process. So if you haven't had a chance to look at the FAQs, take a moment to look at those again. Again, they're all located on our website. However, if you choose to either be remote or in-person and change your mind in either direction, it will be the following week, meaning Monday. So no matter what day of the week you are, and you make that decision to change, the following Monday, you will transition into that new mode of participation. Also, I know there are additional questions that will be coming. Please don't hesitate to reach out to your principals, but I think many of them will be answered this week. I'm hoping that the people that are watching at home, no matter if you're a parent or a teacher, many of those questions have been answered, but more information is to come. With our personnel update, currently, many of you know we have an interim principal at Racebrook School, Mrs. Sharon Wearsman. Sharon also sent an information to that community, Racebrook School, this morning. We have a reading consultant hired at MLT and a resource room teacher at Peck Place School. And the following positions are open in the district. A special education paraprofessional is needed at Mary L. Tracy and Racebrook School, and after security monitor at Turkey Hill School. And as a friendly reminder, our security monitors are going to be used as an ancillary custodian. So there's questions about last month, are we going to hire, do we need to hire additional custodians? At this time, we don't foresee that. We have a security monitor in the morning and the afternoon, and we're going to have a nice overlapping of both positions that will help and address the needs of cleaning in the building. Substitutes for special ed and speech and language pathologists are needed. Before and after-school program instructors are needed, and we've always have been posting our substitutes for custodians, paras, substitutes in security monitor, and kitchen substitutes, which is typical at this time that we want to have in case we have any of our staff that are going to be calling out absent. So that ends my report, Mr. Crowe. If there's any questions, that I threw you to the rest of the board.
Questions for Dr. Scarpetti? Go ahead, Mary.
Hi, Dr. Scarpetti.
Hi, Mrs. Wheelerlander.
I just wanted to just check in. You said that the security monitors would be assisting with custodial work?
Correct.
Would they be getting any of the training that the current custodial staff will be getting that Mr. Gray just referenced?
Great question, yes. They will be invited to that, too.
Awesome. Thank you.
And for anyone who's listening or any of the board members are thinking about this, we are going to have a minimal amount of visitors at the school, practically none because of the situation that we're faced with at this time. Of course, a parent, if they need to drop off something, they are more than welcome to do that, but that will be dropped off in the front office. So typically, where a security monitor is post will be at the front of the school. There's additional resources that they could help us with during the day due to the lack of visitors we're assuming that we're going to have.
Any other questions for Dr. Scarpetti? Very good. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Christine? Report, please.
Good evening, everyone. Since this is the first month of a new fiscal year, there's nothing too unusual going on in terms of the finances, so this will be a short update. The only expenditures in July were for payroll. We haven't cut any accounts payable checks against the 2020-2021 budget yet. We've only cut payroll, so you'll see that that's a short report. We did cut our first accounts payable checks at the beginning of August, so you'll see them in the expenditure report next month. We're still busy paying invoices related to the 2019-20 budget year at this time. We have the, as far as the financials, they are very simplified. You'll see a one-page P and L, profit and loss statement. That will show the full budget for the same account groups that we're used to. It's a Munis report. It's a very nice, simplified Munis report. The year-to-date expenditures and the month-to-date are the same because it isn't the first month, so, but not too much to talk about. We have just started to encumber or reserve funds for those things that we know about, and especially, we have not encumbered or reserved funds for payroll yet. So you won't see in the encumbrance line that there are a lot of reserves for payroll yet. We're still working on that. The budget that's reflected in Munis for 2020-21 is 450 less than the original budget that was approved by the board due to the reduction from the town. We are working through that, where that reduction's going to come from by carrying forward a lot of the COVID savings, as we've talked about previously. So I think that's it as far as financials, if any questions or anything around that.
Any question? Questions?
Nope. A few things on cafeteria food services. We are prepping for the new school year. We did recover some money from AMITI related to the cafeteria, the labor that was provided at the middle school. And we are required to increase prices on meals this year by five cents per meal, as dictated by the state of Connecticut, so we are going to be implementing that. And as Mr. Gray mentioned, we are attending a webinar tomorrow regarding the guidance for the food service program and the nutrition and opening that program for the new year. And I think that's it.
Any? No questions? Very good. Evelyn?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to share that we have created teacher expectations for all three of our learning plans, for the full in-person plan, for the hybrid plan, and for the full remote plan. So we have teacher expectations for all of these. We did share a first draft with the curriculum subcommittee last month, and then an updated version with our chair and with all members of the Board of Education this evening. And we will link these expectations for parents who are interested in seeing as well, because we have heard sometimes parents want to know, is this okay to ask of my teacher? I'm not sure. And so everyone will be aware of these expectations. Now, having said that, the week prior to students coming to school, we've scheduled professional learning opportunities that help our teachers really prepare to meet all of these expectations, and also to address the goals that we've identified for the coming year. And we shared these with everyone at the last board meeting. Just to summarize, they are to prepare and plan for teaching the social-emotional lessons to help develop the well-being of our children. So for example, on Monday, teachers following mitigating strategies will meet in small grade-level teams at their schools to begin to develop the first lessons, and then intermittently meet with their math specialists to learn about some of the new Greg Tang digital resources, which are absolutely fabulous. We can't wait for our teachers to use those. We also said that one of our goals is to teach students the new protocols for the new protocols and procedures for the mitigating strategies. Our principals will review all of these on a Wednesday faculty meeting so that they're aware they can share those with our students. We also have as a goal to teach students how to work remotely, when and if we do have to shift to that plan. And so it's really important that teachers are, you know, familiar and fluent with all of the protocols and procedures for that. So we're going to spend time that week making sure everyone is prepared to teach their students on how to be ready, because we know that student achievement relies on staff development. Our third goal that we mentioned was delivering the targeted and differentiated instruction. And so for our students, on Thursday, for example, prior to students coming back to school, teachers will engage in transition meetings. And so a child's last year's teacher will meet with this year's teacher to really make sure that the instruction is differentiated for students. We're also personalizing and differentiating the instruction for our teachers with all of the Google Suite applications, and we're really excited about this. We are going to rely on Mobile Mind, which has learning paths and micro courses that teach in like little chunks with a minute or two video, with a task that then a teacher engages in, submits for feedback. And so you're really internalizing the learning by actually doing it and then getting feedback. And so it's nice because it's going to allow teachers to increase their knowledge at whatever level they're performing. Some teachers have really mastered the Google Classroom and all of its aspects. Others need some more help. Those that met like level-one courses can go into level-two and so on. So another goal was for teachers to, and an expectation, for teachers to be familiar with all of our distance learning tools and digital resources. And so as Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, people had, or parents had questions about what remote learning is going to look like in that Phase 1. We've got more details with the teacher expectations that will be linked so people can review, but one of the tools is this conference webcam. And the teacher, each teacher will have one of these on Monday and Thursday. One of the members of the IT department will make sure that teachers know how to use this. We tested it today. I can tell you, the first week may not be that smooth. We're still working out some kinks, but we will. And we are excited about this, because if you can picture, if I'm in, I'm just going to say Mrs. Zatoli's class, and I'm a student in that class, I will receive a schedule from Mrs. Zatoli telling me when to stream in live through Google Meet and the Google Classroom for my mini lessons, which are anywhere from 10 to 20 minutes. And those mini lessons that are for a whole group are related specifically to our curriculum and the units of study that our teachers bundle standards for. Is it this one? Oh, sorry. Okay. Oh, sorry. So the mini lessons, so there are mini lessons that are linked to the targets of the units of the curriculum, and then there are mini lessons for small group instruction. So if I'm a remote learner from home, I'm going to know when I need to tune in to get that differentiated instruction as well. So it's those two types. Now, Dr. Scarpetti, in the letter that he shared, also shared guidelines of time for distance learning or remote learning per grade level. And that's important because those are best practices outlined by Columbia University and also approved by CEA. So I'm not sure if that was clear enough, or those were the specifics that parents are looking for. Is there anyone that might have some more questions about what the remote learning would look like? Basically, it's you're receiving a schedule from your Google Classroom, learning about when to tune in for the mini lessons that are aligned to the curriculum, and then the mini lessons for small group instruction that are more differentiated and tailored for student needs. And when you do have an opportunity to look at the teacher expectations, you'll see samples of what that looks like. But we really need each individual teacher to create those schedules and to share those with families. I don't know if that was a good enough picture or enough specifics, but... Betty?
I just have one question. It's related. Will there be any new or different beginning-of-the-year assessments since the students, I know you said they're going to be meeting with their, with a transition meeting with the teachers from the year before, but even with that, I'm thinking there may be needs for some ongoing or beginning-of-the-year assessments that I don't know, will they be new or different, or will it just be as usual?
Well, we will rely on our universal screens that we administer at the beginning of the year. They're very short, and then based on the data of the universal screens, we will still continue with our informal diagnostics. So we use the core, we use the past to gather some more information. You're welcome. Know if there are any more questions?
Yes?
Oh, gosh, Ken, you're right. Thank you. So the fifth goal that teachers will be addressing the week prior to the students coming is meeting the Connecticut State Department of Education legal requirements on specific topics. So that alone takes about three hours for teachers. They need to engage in those GCN tutorials on bloodborne pathogens, on sexual harassment, on bullying, and there will be more added for COVID-19. So thank you, Mr. Simon.
Dr. Russo? Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, if I may, just add a few other comments. So this is the device we're using. I hope we don't enter Phase 2, which is a hybrid, or Phase 3, which is total remote. Why do I hope that? That means the metrics have changed. But in case that we do get to that place of Phase 2 or Phase 3, we need to be prepared. Some other districts are installing cameras in their classrooms. What we really appreciate it with this device, and really, it's an advanced webcam that you have on your computer, is this not only can be used in your... you have on your computer, is this not only could be used in your classroom, but also the teacher could bring it home with them if they so, not if they so choose, but they would like that. I think we shared prior that some teachers, with regard getting feedback from them, even with some parents, is it was difficult to videotape different lessons at home. Now you're able to do that. In addition, it has a speaker that was an element with regards to hearing the teacher over virtually. Yeah, so, you know, here are things that we started research all the way back in March and April and came up with this. So again, hope is not to be in a Phase Two or Phase Three, but this device will also come in handy in those phases, too.
Any other questions? Okay. Mary?
Good evening, everyone. So just a little quick recap on our extended school year. Students and staff finished the remote extended school year services by the end of July. So that's just a little update on that. I would like to recognize Joanna Fawn for her 30 years of service as a paraeducator for the Children of Orange. She has touched so many lives during her long career and has now decided to retire. So I wish her the best of her years to come. I'm very pleased to share with you that we have adaptive and accessible playground equipment that has been installed at Mary L. Tracy and Racebrook School. We're happy to say that this new equipment will be accessible for schoolchildren upon their return to the building. These schools were selected for the new equipment based on district needs. But that's not to say that we are not looking to expand accessible equipment to our other schools. We are in the process of doing that as well. We would like you to know that we care about the social emotional needs of our community members. So as you may recall, last year, the district was awarded the Primary Mental Health Grant Project. Since this is a two-year grant, we will be continuing that program so our eligible students in grades K through three can benefit from this program. And we will be doing some screenings in the beginning of the year to identify who those children will be. As Dr. Russo mentioned, the district will continue our work with the Yale Systems for Social Emotional Supports, where ruler tools, lessons will be implemented by staff, starting with the first week of school and throughout the year. Our professional training sessions the first week for staff also will include the opportunity to participate in managing behaviors in the classroom. So our classroom teachers, our special education teachers specifically, will do this, and our paraeducators will participate in that professional development, but that is offered to all of our staff. And then as a friendly reminder to the community, Piece at Home Parenting Solutions is a townwide subscription. This subscription provides sessions that are live and interactive, online classes and on-demand recorded online classes. And there is also a limited number of individual support sessions that are available, and this entire subscription is available to the entire district up until May 2021. The information to access that is located on our webpage. Communication from the Special Ed Department regarding the reopening of schools went out to all families in the district in the reopening letter that was sent out on August 8th. Our plan addresses our full in-person, hybrid, and full distance. Although we expect to reopen in-person, we've planned for our hybrid and our distance models. All pre-K students will have the option to attend in-person for both full in-person and the hybrid models. If the district moves to a full distance learning, direct instruction will end for our typical peers, and so will their tuition. Let's hope we don't get to that. Remote instruction will continue for our students with special needs. Our pre-K teachers may continue to provide resources for our typical peers as we did last year. Overall, our hybrid model would include, for Orange students with special needs, those would be students who are receiving special education, Tier III services, Level 1 and 2 English language learners, all our pre-K students and identified students based on their spring performance will have the option to attend in-school for the in-person part of our hybrid model four days a week. It's important for families to know that each school-based team will be responsive to the individual needs of students. Any need for change will be discussed with the families in a collaborative manner. Families who have doctor-recommended accommodations are asked to reach out to their child's school nurse as the first source of communication. If a parent or guardian has any questions, as we have said in all of our communication, we encourage you to reach out to your child's school-based team, your principals, and certainly I'm available if anybody has any questions or would like to discuss with me any concerns they have. I am happy to be of service. That's the end of my report.
Questions?
All right. Thank you.
Is there anything else, Dr. Scarpetti?
No, sir.
You can sit. I would just like to say that I think Dr. Scarpetti and his team have done a fabulous job in preparing the schools, not only the physical plan, but the curriculum, and planning ahead for different situations that may occur or not occur. And kudos to all of you. I mean, I think we're as ready we can possibly be, and the schools are just, and they're as clean as they possibly can be as well. So thank you very much for your diligence and your hard work. Board business. Second read, CAPE'S Policy 5141.8, face mask coverings. I think Mrs. Brouw has some comments on this.
Just based, and Dr. Scarpetti can elaborate, but based on evolving DPH guidance for face coverings and recent conversations that Dr. Scarpetti has had with Dr. Mohammed, we would like to postpone the second read, voting on the second read until we get more information on this guidance and have an opportunity to discuss language, the wording, as a subcommittee, and then revisit in our September Board of Ed meeting. Do you want to add?
Thank you, Mrs. Brouw. In addition, for the board members, you may have heard lately there's been new reports regarding certain masks that are being sold. One that's been stated in the news is something called a Gator mask, which is a very thin piece of cloth. This came up in one of our reopening committees where Dr. Mohammed shared that that's probably not the best mask to be wearing. In addition, there are masks that have ventilators. Again, that's another mask that he indicated that should not be worn at school. This is as I shared in my superintendent's report, and I have to thank everyone, the teachers, the parents, the incredible amount of patients they have, because they want to know answers, and they want to know answers right away, and we totally understand that. But this is a perfect example of we're waiting to make sure that we provide the right answers at the right time instead of sharing something out and then changing it. So we are meeting with Dr. Mohammed this week and hopefully getting clarification. The Department of Public Health is releasing information regarding masks, and we're waiting for that. A research has been done, and not to come across as a joke story at this time, but the research finds that three layers is better than two, two layers is better than one, and one layer is better than nothing. So that's what the research was found out. And again, not to be funny in these matters, but I think that was a common sense conclusion that the research came up with. But we want to make sure that our staff and students and our parents are informed properly with requirements of masks. Again, thank you for your patience, but information with regarding masks and what may be required by the DPH will be coming out soon.
Go ahead, Betty.
Just because we are not discussing the policy further does not change the fact that students and staff will all be wearing masks.
Correct.
All right.
I think, and again, I appreciate Mrs. Brouw. Mrs. Brouw, through her guidance, jumped on this quite quickly, but in absence of a policy, we are able to hear and state that masks are required to coming into the school with the exceptions of medical issues that would have to be shared.
Go ahead.
Will some more general guidelines be shared with families?
They will be, Mrs. Reulander.
Thank you.
Again, we're meeting with Dr. Mohammed this week. The information that we received, and even in this webinar this afternoon, stated that the Department of Public Health, their guidelines will not be far-fetched from what the CDC has shared. But we don't want to provide information to our families and then change it. We really want to get the most updated information and science with regarding what masks will be required with our families and staff. That being said, please note, we have masks for everyone. As Mr. Gray shared, we have masks for all our students, so please don't hesitate if you're a parent watching and if you're uncertain. What's great about the masks that we purchased here, they're individually wrapped for our students, they are three-layer masks, please don't hesitate to reach out. That will be supplied as parents, if they had an opportunity to watch the bus video and the protocols on the bus, all bus drivers will be fitted with a child-sized mask. And again, if our teachers don't have masks, we also have them for our staff, teachers, every staff member.
Thank you, Dr. Scarpetti. This is a process question. This is an agenda item that was supposed to be voted on this evening. So we need to make a motion to delay the vote, correct? Yeah? Is that right, Mary?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So I will be looking for a motion to postpone tonight's vote on CAPE'S Policy 5141.8, face mask coverings, until further information is obtained. How's that sound? Okay. Motion? Christian? Christian to make the motion? Second? Betty? Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Brouw. Discussion and possible action on early release days for the 2021 student calendar. If you'll recall, I believe it was at the last meeting or the meeting before we voted on a school calendar, Dr. Scarpetti would like to make a proposal regarding that calendar.
Yes, Mr. Crowe. So information on that has been discussed in our reopening committees, have come up with regarding the first week of having early release days. Some topics included about the temperature in the buildings that, you know, we would like to wait a week. But more than that, which I think is an important element, is really getting to these new protocols and procedures for everyone. So I'm requesting the board to grant early release days for the first week of school. Also, these early release days will allow our teachers to get together at the end of each day and reflect on the processes that we are new to all of us in order to make changes on the subsequent days that follow.
When you say early release, what are the specific times?
I believe, I believe early release days are one... What time, Mr. Gray? Early release days, one, is it 1:40?
12:50.
Oh, I'm sorry. 12:55.
12:55?
Yes.
Okay. And a normal starting time?
Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were clear so parents understood that. And that's for the first week of school?
Yes. And we will send, if the board approves of this, Mr. Crowe, we will be sending those specifics of the time, start and end times of those days.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Dr. Scarpetti on this? Go ahead, Betty.
The early dismissal day does include lunch, so the lunch protocols and procedures will also be done that first week on early dismissal days?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And to your point, Mrs. Hadlock, that's a new procedure for everyone.
Right.
Lunches will be served in the classrooms, the cleaning process, everything will be able to discuss, to be, to occur, but also to be discussed after the students leave.
So you're looking for a motion for the board to modify its 2021 student calendar to include five half-days at the beginning of school?
That's correct, Mr. Crowe.
What are those dates exactly? We probably should...
The 31st, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, and 4th.
All right. Did you get that, Mary, for the motion? Okay. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Very well, Dr.
Thank you.
Recycling discussion. Mary was at the meeting the other night where they discussed some, at the town meeting, and discussed some recycling possibilities for the schools.
Yes. I was at the Board of Selectmen meeting on August 12th where an agreement was made between the Town of Orange and a company called Simple Recycling that deals with textile recycling and home goods collection. And the reason why Mr. Crowe asked me to bring it up to the board was that part of the agreement that was actually notated after the vote had been taken by the Board of Selectmen was that collection bins would be placed at each of the elementary schools. So that would allow participation by teachers, parents, families that maybe don't go to the transfer station where the main collection bin would be. It would unfortunately not include office paper or other recycling materials such as plastics and things like that for the schools, but it would, in the board packet, is a rather extensive list of things that are accepted, and it would be something that the town would recoup funds with. So that would be helpful in general. And this would hopefully start in six to eight weeks is what they are anticipating, and they would be picked up at the request of the schools. So that's something that would be arranged, I assume, through the board, Dr. Scarpetti, and the principals for location and that whole process. There really weren't that many more details shared.
That we need to take action on this, but I think that we probably should get a little more information as to the location and the size of the containers. I mean, I'm all for the recycling. Do you have any more information, Betty?
No, I just have a question because, Mary, it's your understanding that this is not something we decide, it has already been decided, and we just have to find out more information as opposed to us saying we don't think it's a good idea?
That seems to be the case. It was, when it was presented, they originally only discussed the location of the transfer station with the main collection bin. And then it was afterwards, the gentleman who was representing the company said, oh, just want to confirm, this is for the other places in the town, including all the schools.
No, I was there, too, but...
Oh, okay.
Based upon what I heard Mr. Ziole say, it sounded as if that was something that we would be discussing, not something that was a fait accompli, but that could be my misunderstanding.
I wasn't sure. I decided I would bring it to the attention of the board.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I just have some concerns about it, about where they'd be placed, about who would be responsible for them, about how often they'd be picked up. I mean, if we have to, that's fine. If not, I think we need a lot more guidance on it before we agree to it.
Well, first of all, Mary is just the conduit of information.
Right. I'm not giving Mary a hard...
No, no.
I appreciate that. And Mary got stuck with that.
I think what we need to do is probably, Dr. Scarpetti and/or possibly Buildings and Grounds, have a further discussion. Mitch Goldblatt is the head of the recycling committee, and maybe have a conversation or more information from Selectmen Ziole and/or Mr. Goldblatt, and then we can figure it out. I mean, I'm sure it's something that's worthwhile doing. We just need to know the logistics and the details and who's responsible for what, when.
And I'm not against it at all. I just think we need a little more detail, and I'm thinking, all right, why would they not put one at High Plains Community Center? You know, to me, that would be a reasonable place as well, but...
It may be. They didn't list the additional specific locations.
No, it just says public schools.
They said, yeah, other locations throughout town, including the schools.
Orange public schools. So...
I was a little leery of the idea that people that can't get to the transfer station go there, and it's, you know, it doesn't seem feasible that people are going to walk to the school or go to the school or bring stuff. It seems to me it could lead to a lot of problems, so...
My guess is they're probably thinking that people who are dropping off their kids may throw a bag and then throw it in there. I mean, I know in the past, the PTOs have done fundraisings with clothing and that sort of thing, but we've got to work out the logistics.
It's the transfer station. It's a part of the town. I mean, you know, going there. I mean, you know, going there.
I understand, Ken. I understand. All right. So we'll get a little more information, and then I do appreciate you bringing it up and bringing it to our attention, Mary.
My pleasure.
Are you all set?
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, guys. Where are we on? Standing Committees. Finance and Operations, Ms. Riccioli is not here. I don't think anyone's going to, we already saw our report. I don't think anyone's going to replace. Personnel, Policy Transportation, Mrs. Broux.
The only thing I want to mention is that I would like to get back on schedule with the last Monday of the month meetings and try to get those on our calendar, at least until budget season. So if we, if everyone could plan on meeting on the 31st, and we can all chalky for times.
The budget season?
Well, it's around the corner.
I know, it is. Building and Grounds, Mr. Flynn.
Good evening. So Buildings and Grounds had an extended meeting last Wednesday morning where we toured for just about two hours, both Turkey Hill and Peck Place School. Mr. Gray has already shared with you some of the particulars, but just some of the highlights that we saw in our tour were the duck cleaning that was in progress. We got to see some of the sample classroom designs with students being placed at a safe distance apart. We also, you may have seen on your way into the board building, the flooring project that was, in this building, has been completed. We spent over an hour at Turkey Hill going through the hallways, classrooms, gymnasiums. We also adjourned and then toured Peck Place School. Dr. Scarpetti alluded to the weather the first week of school, and when we arrived at Peck, having come from Turkey Hill, it was a much cooler atmosphere, so I think there's some interest among some of the Buildings and Grounds members of exploring bringing cooling throughout the district. And I think particularly having worn a mask at Turkey Hill on that warm morning, I think there would be some enthusiasm for that. We also toured Peck Place and took a look at some of the work that's being done there. Throughout the tour, one of the true, truly impressive things were not just the work that was being done, but the very thorough and comprehensive explanation of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. Mr. Gray shared some of the ways he's been keeping himself informed with the, both the State of Connecticut, Department of Public Health, and EPA. He mentioned the five Cs, and also being in contact with Dr. Shaw. So I think, I don't want to speak for all the other subcommittee members, but I think there is a general consensus of great confidence in the work that has been taking place over the summer. It has not been easy, and it has, I think, reflected incredible dedication and follow-through and constant, sometimes changes coming from the state and other places that have been met with, the challenge has really been well met. A couple of thank-yous to Father Norman at Holy Infant, who has loaned the district additional desks, which is going to help with our spacing. And then also, we had three rooftop units that were probably at the end of their lifetime and as part of our ventilation to get ready for this. The Board of Finance and Chairman Houlihan has supported replacing those. They were at the end of their lifetime, and I think Mr. Gray or Dr. Scarpetti could share more of the particulars if anyone has specific questions, but I think we would have been spending almost equivalent to fix it and outdated and at the end of its lifetime structure. And so we do really appreciate the support of the Board of Finance in doing that. You know, we all wear multiple hats. I was there in the capacity of the Building and Grounds Chairman, but I was also there as a dad, just like many members of the public, wondering, is this, is this going to be something I could send my own three children to? And I left there with great confidence and comfort at the steps, the dedication and the hard work that Mr. Gray, Dr. Scarpetti, and the team here has put forth. You mentioned, you may recall, last month, we voted to get that duck cleaning up and running. That is just about completed, as you learned. I think that was a great move. Our rooftop units are going to be in the process of being completed, and, you know, I left there as not just as a satisfied chairperson of the, or subcommittee, but as a really comforted father, that this would be a place that, you know, none of us went into education, I think, knowing that we would be becoming experts in dilution rates of sanitizers and ventilation experts, and the amount of expertise, the amount of education, the amount of follow-through, the amount of constant updating of themselves that Dr. Scarpetti and Mr. Gray and the team has undertaken here. I left there with great confidence and great comfort in what they have done. And quite frankly, for the first time in a long time, really excited about the possibility that our students are going to be able to be in a school that is very safe. And, you know, I think we all can agree that if at all possible, the psychological aspect of being in school and being with their peers and teachers is very important. So Mr. Crowe had me up again early this morning. We were over at Turkey Hill at 8:00. We are looking to repair and improve a little bit the Turkey Hill loading dock. I imagine we will be meeting again soon, but that exact time will be to determine for Buildings and Grounds. But a sincere thank you to Dr. Scarpetti, Mr. Gray, and the team who has, in my opinion, I think Attorney Young here is also in the committee would agree, it's been a tremendous, tremendous effort to educate themselves in these protocols, to implement them, to find resources, to double-check, and I am very impressed and proud and thankful of their work that they prepared our schools in getting ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Any questions for Charles? I would just like to make a comment, and actually, I want to task Charles's committee with another thing. Sometime last week, it came to my attention that Senator Murphy, along with Elizabeth Warren and Ilhan Omar, introduced legislation, or will be introducing legislation, that will eliminate SROs in our schools. We currently don't have SORs, but it's been discussed, but we do have a DARE program. And one of the things that really put a red flag up for me was that part of Senator Murphy's comment was, police shouldn't be in our schools. Our DARE program is a great program. The kids love it. It's past and present, DARE officers have been wonderful, wonderful. So I would like Buildings and Grounds because they are part of security as well and safety to take a look and see what this legislation says, and it is, in fact, our DARE program in jeopardy because of this. So Charles, if you would put that on your next agenda, I appreciate it. Next is Mr. Zeiman, Curriculum. Now, who took your report this time?
Oh, my reports are, oh, no, no, this is fine. This is, this is fine. I actually have my own stuff. Thank you. I have three points to make. Teaching in an elementary school is not merely an intellectual exercise. When you're an elementary school teacher, you realize you have become, at least for that year, one of the most important people in each of your students' lives. It's hard enough in person, but to try to create that relationship with distance or hybrid learning only, in my opinion, is almost impossible. So I think it's especially important, as long as the metrics support it, that we enable the teachers and students to build that relationship in person for as long as they can. Elementary teachers spend a lot of time in their classrooms before school begins, decorating, organizing, visualizing, planning, playing with their new stuff. So much time that when the children show up, the teachers are already two weeks down the road. So it had to really be a shock in April when they just suddenly found themselves home along with their children, those in their class, as well as their sons and daughters. They weren't ready or equipped for this situation, and neither was anybody else. Their remarks at the end of the year showed how much they had grown and adapted to that situation. Building on their success from last year, this school year will begin with a series of teacher planning and training sessions to ensure that they will be familiar with and able to use all of the digital resources available to them. Teacher expectations will be shared. We feel confident our teachers will be able to maximize learning in whatever phase we are in at that time, and will be able to smoothly transition between phases. Last one. You know, we had a pretty good gig here, Mr. Chairman. We were working for the community, meeting and making new friends. In general, we're quite pleased being associated with the Orange school system, which thanks to such advances as the teachers taking the responsibility for participating and creating the curriculum, as well as determining how to best present it, embracing the importance that social-emotional growth plays as a part of the learning dynamics. We've been intimately involved with a system that was at the forefront of current educational theory. Then COVID-19 occurred. Now we found ourselves stressed, wrestling with what should be done and what needs to be done. We're feeling overwhelmed by the fear that our decisions can impact the lives of our teachers, support staffs, our children, and their families. Then we come to meet and listen to Dr. Scarpetti, Dr. Russo, Mike Gray, Matt Ullering, and Mary Edo, and we're comforted by the knowledge that they are, as much as anyone can be, in control of this situation and prepared for whatever the future will hold for our schools and our children. And we have to thank them all for enabling us to face the future with confidence in their ability to get us through this situation. I don't get the credit for these thoughts. I just get to report them.
That's the end. Much, Mr. Zeiman. Any questions for Mr. Zeiman? Very good. I think we can all agree with what Mr. Zeiman just said. Okay. Aces. Ms. Riccioli is not here. So, you ready, Ken? It's your moment, it's your moment to shine. You can be first. Mr. Zeiman is making a motion to adjourn. Can Mr. Zeiman make the second? Can we let him make the second? No?
One second.
All right. Betty made the second. Any further discussion on adjourning? All in favor? Opposed? Abstained? We are adjourned at 8:06. Thank you.